I'd like to call the meeting to order. All board members are present. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know a couple items were moved around on the agenda before we started, but they don't have any impact on how the meeting will flow, so can I have a motion to approve it?
They're moved.
Second. Any additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank Eric Garnis. He's heading for a place closer to where he grew up in Iowa as an administrator. He did a fairly good job as an administrator here. And for about 10 years before that, he was a junior high teacher and senior high teacher in mathematics. So, we did work together and he was a very good math teacher.
I know the students really enjoyed having him in both positions. Well, thanks to Eric for his work here. Any other comments? All in favor of passing the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Committee reports. Did the Policy Committee meet at all?
No.
Okay. And did Southwest Metro?
Southwest Metro takes the summer off. We'll have our next meeting in August.
Same with CPAC?
CPAC also will meet when the school year starts.
Meet at the end?
As of now, Matt, we will meet on July 7th, I believe. Six o'clock.
Wellness off for summer also?
Wellness, we convene once the school year starts.
Early childhood.
Yes, we'll start meeting again when the school starts.
Everything slows down in summer, I guess. It's good.
A breather.
That was easy.
Except the corn.
We have Tony Boothey with us this evening. He is taking Tim's place, so he will be doing the superintendent reports.
Okay, I've got a few things, so just bear with me here. One, I would like to just remind our school board and also the public on Wednesday of this week, June 29th, there will be a groundbreaking for the CEC slash pool. And it will be on the north side of the CEC where the pool is going to be built. And that is, again, a groundbreaking ceremony. All of you school board members, our administrators are invited. And then we've also invited the city council, some of the swimming folks, and it is open to the public. So, anybody that wants to, if they see this on TV who would like to attend, it's 9:00 AM this Wednesday, June 29th. A second thing, you may or may not have seen it in the Star Tribune this weekend, but we are very pleased to announce that the New Prague School District has been selected as a 2016 Star Tribune Top Workplace. Star Tribune's top workplaces were selected from the results of an employee survey conducted by Workplace Dynamics that measures engagement, organizational health, and satisfaction. The Top Workplace's Special Section was published in the Star Tribune this Sunday, June 26th. New Prague was listed as one of the companies or organizations that have met the national standard as a top workplace. We have asked Chuck in the New Prague Times to write an article, and after Thursday, we will then publicize it on our own school website and share it with our employees. But it is a very exciting thing. There were only three school districts in the entire 150 top workplaces. Shisago Lakes and Minnetonka and New Prague Schools. So, congratulations, school board. And I know Mr. Dittbrenner is very, very excited about this recognition. And we, of course, believe all the employees within our school district do a wonderful job, and this is a great way to recognize all of them and it being a top workplace in Minnesota. So, congratulations. A few things that have happened with some of our students here. Approximately one week ago, Taylor Ledwine was the 3A state champion for girls golf. Taylor won her second consecutive girls golf state championship. She shot an even 72, even par 72 at Bunker Hills on the second day. And she will be attending Bradley University next fall. It is the fourth consecutive state championship in girls golf for New Prague. Two years prior to Taylor was Mackenzie Neisen won it two years in a row, and then Taylor won it two years in a row. So, that's pretty impressive. A team event, the New Prague High School Clay Target Team won the Minnesota State High School League State Team Championship, and that was Saturday at the Minneapolis Gun Club in Prior Lake. They shot 480 targets out of 500. And they were 10th last year, so quite an improvement. I do have some names. The team members were Ben Dietz, Jordan Stocker, Parker Precht, Isaac Simon, Woodrow Glazer, and there were two alternates, Tyler Bezek and Courtney Novak. So, congratulations to the Clay Target Team. There was some individual competition, and I am unsure of how that turned out. And I'll look to my left if Chuck knows anything. Ben Dietz took second for the second year in a row, so that's wonderful for him. We did have one senior football player play in the Minnesota Coaches Association All-Star Game at St. Cloud this past Saturday. That was Will Halloran. He played on the South Team, was a defensive back, and Will will be attending St. Scholastica next fall and also playing football. One last thing I just wanted to bring up to the school board. On May 31st and June 1st, we had two professional development days here for our teaching staff. And on the first two days of the professional development, we had over 30 sessions, and there were 209 staff members that attended. And that is all of our teaching staff. We invite substitute teachers. We invite teachers from our proquel schools. We invite some daycare providers. Anybody and everybody that has a teaching license that wants to come in and take part in our professional development days. We had over 209 staff members last year. In our first two days, we had 141. So, if you remember, this is the third consecutive year that we've been doing a lot of the staff development during the summertime. It is clearly growing every summer, and that's definitely something that we love to see and we want to see. So, we feel very good about that. We have two more days in August, and that is August 9th and August 10th, where we will deliver another 30-plus professional development sessions. And most, all of those are taught by our own teaching staff.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, Donnie.
This is a little off the subject, but we had discussed about moving our meetings. Has any arrangements or decision been made on that?
Unless Sandy knows something, I'm not privy to any of that. School board meetings, I think Don is saying.
We'll be moving them in August.
Yeah, we're having one more meeting here, I think. And then we'll announce something July 13th, right? Is that our next meeting?
Yeah.
And that's when we'll announce. But yeah, we are moving.
They're going to be starting here a little bit earlier than they thought, so we'll be moving.
We did discuss this with our world architect last Tuesday morning at our subcommittee meeting, so they would like us out of here soon. I think they're going to start doing some work here.
Or else they're going to do a wall right here. They said we could still have our meeting, but there'd be a wall.
That's good news, though.
Anything else? That's it for the superintendent's update.
Thanks, Tony. Let's get to our agenda items here. Blended learning update. Tony?
Yeah, just, this spring, a number of people came together and wanted to kind of answer a question. Does learning have to stop because of a snow day? So, we brought in some parents, principals, students, myself, Mr. Brandt, and a variety of other teacher folks from all of the buildings, and really just kind of brainstormed a little bit. Three years ago, the majority of you were all around, and we started our powerful learning and brought in our Chromebooks for not only the students, but also the staff. And beginning next fall, all of our teachers will have Chromebooks, and the majority of all of our students will also. And it was something we started talking about years ago, and you'll see some other school districts have began talking about things like this. And we're talking snow day, but there's some, every once in a while, there's another reason where maybe there wouldn't be school. But does learning have to really stop on a snow day? And really, we came up with the answer of no. Learning usually doesn't stop on weekends. A lot of times, it doesn't stop over holidays, vacations, whatever. Teachers for many years have been, you know, providing opportunities for kids to do things at home. So, we brought these folks together and just gathered some information and really would like to kind of challenge not only our teachers, but our students a little bit to think in different ways. If there is a snow day, how can we continue to engage our kids in high levels of learning? And our principals feel very confident in working with their staffs this fall to allow some time, maybe during some of our PLC times. What would it look like if we have a snow day? Now, we don't want anybody watching this, parents or students, to get overly excited. Nobody's taking your snow days away. Nobody's going to make them sit in their house for six and a half hours and work on the computer or do other types of work. It's intended to just continue learning, and with technology, that can happen. And it's just a great way to keep everyone stimulated and continue with the curriculum while kids are at home for some other reason. And we do that already many, many times. A lot of times, we'll have some kids who get a little bit longer-term illness or things like that. In the olden days, they had to wait until they came back to kind of gather some of their information or to get any type of lessons taught to them. But now with technology, we can continue the learning, whether it be via email or Moodle or those types of, you know, performance things that we utilize within our district. And this is something that every one of the people on our committee really felt very strongly about that we would be able to do. So, this fall, our principals will be visiting with our staff in regards to working on some learning that takes place even during a snow day. So, we just kind of wanted to call the attention to you folks about that, and it's kind of called blended learning because the blended piece is not only sitting within the school day, but also what happens outside the school day. You bring those together, and that's where the blended learning takes place. There will be more information on this probably to come. There aren't a lot of rules. It really does come down to the teachers, where they're at with some of their teaching, some of the things they can and cannot do for the students. But it, I'll assure the students and the parents, it will be okay. Any questions on blended learning during potential snow days?
Thanks, Tony.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the approval of the preliminary fiscal year 2016-17 budget.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to bring to you the final preliminary budget for approval. We are required by state statute to have a budget approved by June 30th. And I presented the first preliminary budget, the first reading of it, in May, and just have a few changes to talk about since the first reading. The first one is needed to add about $7,800 for additional integrated learning program consulting through December to bring us through when that program starts. A little bit later in the meeting, we'll have a lease for that program as well. I adjusted the fiscal year 15-16 severance expenditures to actuals now that we have that. I added another school bus. We've taken a look at our school bus fleet. We only had one bus in the budget for this year, but we really need to have two. And because of a shortage of capital funds, we're going to be taking that out of the general fund. And then I reduced the transfer for early childhood screening losses by $5,000 to $10,000 based on the budget that I worked with Janelle on. And then, of course, I completed the other funds. In May, I only presented the general fund, so now we have all funds for approval tonight. So, this is the final preliminary budget. Total general fund, revenues of $39 million and expenditures of $41.7 million. And unassigned, you see $36.5 million revenue and almost $39 million in expenses. The way I budget, and you've noticed, known this about me in the past, is that I budget kind of worst-case scenario, and so I don't expect that there to be such a big difference between revenue and expenditures, but we do expect to lose some fund balance next year.
Is this the first year that we're going to be losing fund balance? It seems to me it was always flipped the other years, wasn't it? Revenue was higher, so, and that's why we got that reserve for this, I assume you all agree.
Yes, yep. And the next slide here, the general fund balance history. So, you can see in 14-15, our total general fund balance is $10.6 million. At the end of this year, I expect to lose maybe just a little teeny bit, but then next year, again, according to the budget, we'd be declining in fund balance. Here are the reserve and committed accounts. Really, nothing's changed from before except for the severance. I adjusted that to actual. And you notice the severance fee, and I'll talk about this a little bit during the resolution to assign funds or commit funds, but at the end of next year, it'll be down quite a bit because of all of our teachers that are eligible for severance need to retire by the end of 2017 to be eligible for that severance payment. So, after that is done, then we're down to just a few, you know, we have principals and a few other employee groups on some severance benefits. Nutrition and community services. I have the, both the anticipated fiscal year 15-16 fund balance year end as well as projected next year. And you can see they're both expected to grow nicely. And the construction and bond funds are Fund 6. Of course, that's our building project. We anticipate spending about $8 million this year, ending the year with about $49 million balance. And we anticipate spending all but about $6 million at the end of next fiscal year. Bond fund, really nothing unusual to report here, just making our normal bond and interest payments. Our next step, next steps would be September, we'll bring the audit results to you. We're starting the audit. We had auditors here last week, and they'll be here again sooner than we know it. And then December, I'll bring the final 16-17 budget for your approval. And then in January, we'll have the updated five-year projection into, to start the fiscal year 17-18 budget process. So, any questions on this?
For people who might be looking at the chart at home and noticing the drop in the general fund balance, what are your progressions going forward? Not progression.
Projections?
Projections.
Yeah, you know.
You know, obviously, we can't, you can't have that much of a drop every year and, you know, have, keep a fund balance going, so it's obviously going to change over time, so...
Yes, you know, depending upon where this year ends up, and then again, where next year ends up, we will be doing, we'll probably be doing budget adjustments sometime in the next couple of years, and depending, of course, from funding from the state.
And depending on student levels, too.
Right, and enrollment levels. You know, our enrollment levels have pretty much leveled off, growing just very slightly. But next year, we're already seeing a trend of maybe higher-than-anticipated enrollment, which always helps.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the preliminary?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary budget.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next, we need a certification of the district population.
Right, so, we have looked at building permits over the last year since we last did this, and so we're looking at about 73 building permits within our district last year. And so, we use a demographic factor of 2.52 per household. And so, we're looking at an additional, an increase in our population, and we'd expect our population to be 18,957.3. And this basically gets certified, sent it into MDE, and our community services revenue is, some of our community services revenue is based on this factor.
We had somebody a couple of years ago do a population projection. I can't remember her name, but...
Hazel.
Are they, okay, Hazel, are they still, have you checked back? Is she pretty close to her projections, or?
Yeah, you know, I didn't, I didn't check the population. I'm always checking the enrollment, but I didn't check the population, but I will do that.
Okay, I just wondered. Google on this, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the certification of the district population.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. The joint powers agreement, which we've gone over multiple times in work sessions and discussed here.
I make a motion, we approve the joint power agreement with the city.
I'll second it.
There are a couple of minor changes, Mike, after the city council meeting they had in May, no, June, yeah, June. Just added a couple of minor things. Nothing major at all. The only, I'll only mention two, I guess. Actually, one is from our attorney. In in-kind contributions, we talk about the city agreeing to provide at no cost the city's baseball fields and other fields and facilities. We just added the caveat, unless other lease arrangements are made between the parties, you're familiar, we are going to be paying something for our base, the baseball fields coming up due to the construction on the baseball fields, and we just wanted to make sure we were covered. And the other change had to do with the potential loss on the outdoor pools, outdoor pool going forward, and just basically added some, said that we will, if the losses, this is not a change of the losses or profits are more than $2,000, that we will discuss it with the city, and then we just added that they shall endeavor to reach agreement on how the losses or gains will be dealt with. So, those are really the only two changes of any substance. The rest are just kind of small wording changes. And they approved it last Monday, and looking for approval tonight, and then we'll get going on the advisory committee.
And this has been a many-month process to get it all worked out, and it's gone really smoothly. You just have to get all the correct words in the document, I think. All in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Mist renewal.
Yes, I don't think I had an attachment to this, and I probably could have, but basically just asking for approval. The mist is for our property and commercial liability insurance. And our premium from 15-16 is going up $1,170 to a total of $148,784.97. Just looking for approval from you to proceed with that renewal that starts on Friday.
Maybe Sandy, it's a group of schools working together, correct? About 17 school districts, and it's gone very well?
Right, actually, now we have, we have, we have 19. I think I said 18 the other night. We have 19, and we already, we already have one additional members, and we're looking at adding three additional, so for a total of four this year. They're expecting one rather large district to come on board, actually, tonight.
And this is the third year we're doing it, or fourth? It's gone very well. Yeah.
And it has lowered our insurance.
Yeah, it's lowered our premiums as well as increased our coverage limits, and we've added cyber insurance and pollution insurance. And yeah, it's gone very well.
I'll make a motion to renew our mist involvement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Next, we have our substitute rate of pay.
Right, we reviewed this at the work session with you two weeks ago, but basically, now that we have, all of our contracts are settled, we like to, we always review our substitute rates of pay. The teacher one is not changing because we reviewed that mid-year after we settled the teacher contract, but all the other ones are changing at this point. And they're all basically a little bit lower than our first step, except for the bus driver substitutes. We're putting that at the first step of the contract. And the only little bit unusual change is the fact that food service, they're splitting it up between elementary and secondary, and we will be paying 50 cents more per hour for the secondary versus elementary due to the more difficult to find subs to work in the secondary schools for food service.
Sandy, I was going to ask, how does this compare to other surrounding districts?
You know, they compare very well. Yeah, it depends upon if you, you know, go north or go south, but no, I feel we're very competitive.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-licensed substitute rate of pay.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Fund 4 transfer, which I think you alluded to earlier.
Yes, so this is, this is, I'm not sure how many, I think this is the fourth year we've done this. We had a rather large negative unassigned fund balance in Fund 4 due to losses from early childhood screening in previous years. And the auditors, when I first started, said we need to do something about that negative fund balance in Fund 4. And so, we've been transferring $50,000 per year from the general fund to the Fund 4 to cover those losses. This is the last time it's going to be so large, because we're going to be, hopefully be in the positive this year, and then we'll just, very small positive, but a little bit positive. And then we'll basically just transfer just enough we need to stay, to break even. So, this is the 50, the last $50,000 transfer.
I make a motion, we pass a resolution approving Fund 04 transfer.
Do a second to consider the resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and second to consider the following resolution, whereas Minnesota statute 1218.19 allows an independent school district to permanently transfer funds from the general fund to the community services fund for the purpose of covering unreimbursed early childhood screening expenditures, whereas Minnesota state aid has been insufficient for developmental screening expenditures, and this has contributed to a large unassigned fund balance in Fund 04. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the New Prague Area School Board of Education that New Prague area schools will transfer $50,000 of its unassigned general fund balance to the unassigned community services fund in the year 15-16. How do you vote on this, Jerry?
Yes.
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 Kim?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dennis, yes? Item passes.
Next, we have a resolution for the severance commitment.
Right, and this, again, we've done every year. Basically, just proposing that we committed an additional $125,000 of our unassigned fund balance for future severance payments. We would end up the year then in fiscal year 15-16 with a little over $600,000 committed to future severance payments.
We motion to consider the resolution to commit funds for future severance and other post-employment benefit payments.
I'll make the motion.
Do a second.
Second.
It's been moved and second to consider the following resolution, whereas the current master agreements with teachers and support staff include a severance or other post-employment benefit provision that represents a significant future liability to the school district, whereas GASB 54 reporting guidelines allowed by school board resolution to commit unassigned general fund balance to account for future severance and other post-employment benefit liability. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the New Prague Area School Board of Education that New Prague area schools will commit a portion of the unassigned general fund balance to account for future severance and other post-employment benefit liability to enable better planning for future payments. As a desire, the school board can adjust the amount of money committed for these purposes within the general fund balance. The Board of Education committed $814,286 in the general fund for year 14-15. New Prague area schools expect to pay $306,954 in severance payments during the year 15-16. The Board of Education commits an additional $125,000 in the general fund for the 15-16 year. The total amount of general fund committed at the end of the year 15-16 will be $632,332. How do you vote on this resolution, Don?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis, yes? Item passes.
Next, we have the resolution for the funds for the artificial turf replacement.
Right, thank you. So, the, with the athletic turf and our new athletic facility, this artificial turf will have to be replaced at some point in the future, as yet unknown. But when we, when we built the stadium, we had talked about as a board committing some money every year for the purpose of setting money aside, so we have the money to replace that turf. that turf when it is time to do so. Now, since then, we do have the long-term facilities maintenance revenue that would allow us to sell bonds for that. So, at some future date, you know, we may change our minds and do something else. But at this point, we'd like to commit seventy-five thousand dollars a year for this purpose.
It's a prudent thing to do because instead of getting one hit in one year, we lay it over several years and make the cost more spread out over the years.
Right.
Thing to do, I think, at this time. At this time, I'll consider a motion for the resolution to commit funds for the future artificial turf replacement. Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Do a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas the district recently completed construction of an athletic facility with artificial turf, whereas this artificial turf will need to be replaced in ten to twelve years. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the New Prague Area School Board of Education that New Prague Area Schools will commit a portion of the unassigned general fund balance to use towards replacing the artificial turf in the future as the district determines. As it desires, the school board can adjust the amount of money committed for these purposes within the general fund balance. The total amount of general fund committed at the end of the year fifteen-16 is seventy-five thousand for this purpose. How do you vote on this, Jerry?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes.
Next, we have a lease to approve for our off-site classes that we're going to be offering this fall.
Right, this is for the integrated learning, right? Is that integrated learning? Okay. So, we have found space at New Day Church in a portion of their building that they do not use. Tony was able to find that space. And so, I drafted a lease agreement with help from our attorney. And the, the program, it's a very standard lease. This program would cost approximately nine thousand dollars over the next year. We'll take possession of it the middle of August and be done the end of May. And we will be lease levying for this, for most of these funds. It's important that that program be held off-site for a number of reasons, and this is a very good location for that and a very good facility for that.
There is no problem on the separation of church and stadium, is there?
No.
Good for a motion. I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the New Day Church lease agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? No, because I know we've talked about this.
We looked at different, the committee looked at different facilities. These are the program.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you.
I make a motion. We approve the transportation handbook.
I'll second. Should we read what the changes are? I assume parents will go online to check it. There is one change.
There's one change of, with, no pictures or videos are allowed on the bus because of issues with children posting pictures that weren't, shouldn't have been posted.
I'm assuming parents can get online to know what the change is to, if need be.
They'll, they'll get it. I think they get an emailed link when they sign up for their transportation, and it mimics what's in the school.
It's highlighted, I'm assuming, the change.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Middle school activities handbook. That one just updated dates.
There's basically not much change in that one, was there?
And then one other thing they pointed out, that when kids get a ride home from activities with their parents, they used to have to turn a letter into the office. Now, they just start turning it into the coach, which is probably easier for the coach to keep track of.
I'll make a motion to approve the middle school activities handbook.
Second.
Any further comment?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. ALC handbook.
I'll make a motion to approve the handbook.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. The high school activities handbook, that had, it just updated to reflect some of the changes that were made in the high school handbook with the.
Sports, wasn't it?
Yeah, sports and how many credits you had to be progressing towards graduation.
They were going to monitor a little closely participants in sports. I think that was a big one, wasn't it?
Right, yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the high school activities handbook.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Because we talked about it at the work session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
I make a motion to approve the 2016-17 high school coaches advisory manual.
Second.
A second? Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. And the MSHSL membership resolution.
That's something we do annually, right?
Yeah, we have to read it and approve it.
Danny, you got the resolution?
Right, the great majority of schools in the state have a membership in the Minnesota State High School League. And at this time, I'll entertain a resolution for the 2016-2017 membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Do a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Resolve that the governing board of school district seven-twenty-one, county of Scott Rice and LeSueur, state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic, did I say the right number? Okay, good. I used to, I used to work for a district that had the same numbers, but just transposed, so I worried about that. Okay. Regulation and interscholastic athletic and fine arts events referred to in the Minnesota statutes, section one-two-eight, seed point zero-one, to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the state commissioner of education, as provided by the Minnesota statutes, that the school will now belong again to the Minnesota State High School League. How do you vote on this, Don?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes.
So, our next meeting, it's.
Five-thirteenth.
Is it, it's the eleventh. That's what I was just looking at, the Monday. So, we said it, we said the wrong date early. We're just having one meeting. It'll be a normal business meeting, and it's going to be at Falcon Ridge?
Falcon Ridge.
After that.
No, after that.
Yeah.
The other one will be here, and then in August, it'll, it'll move.
There's not, there's only one meeting in July.
Yeah.
Only one meeting in July.
It'll be a work session.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.